September 21st. And first, I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District One Morissette?
Here.
District Two Brokaw?
Here.
District Three Bernard?
Here.
District Four Wyland?
Here.
District Five O'Malley?
Here.
District Six Burchill?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on any topic or subject that's not on tonight's agenda but might come before the council at a future meeting or have an impact on the city of Hudson, this is your chance. I see one hand raising. Yep, I gotta tell everybody else, though. I know you know what to do. Kim Heineman from the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau is here. So, Kim, why don't you be first?
Good evening, everybody. I was just wanting to come and invite you personally, both you, the council, and also the viewing audience, to our Spirit of the St. Croix Days this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, in Lakefront Park. The weather's going to be just like this, I'm sure, I hope. Anyway, we have all kinds of fun things planned for the weekend. Over sixty-five juried artist booths, which we are working in conjunction with the FIP Center for the Arts. We have entertainment on the stage, including on Saturday night, the Minnesota Jazz Orchestra, along with Colleen Ray and Company. We also have entertainment going on in the Stage All Weekend, in addition to marketplace booths and food. On Saturday night, we also have the Taste of Hudson, which we have in the big festival tent that ten of our local restaurants will be participating in. So, it's a Taste of Hudson food, wine, and beer experience. So, we invite all of you to come and experience that. At the same time, for families, there will be a movie after dark in the stage area. So, they'll be fun for the whole family. So, I'm inviting you all to come. Please come. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment or address the council tonight? I'd like to introduce a visitor. This is his second time. He's been here in Hudson on an extended stay from the Democratic Republic of the Congo and lives in the capital city Kinshasa. Kinshasa?
Kinshasa.
Kinshasa. Bishop John Bafada. You want to come up and say hello to everyone in our TV audience? The first time he said he was here, he was interested in watching our democracy in practice, and I said, "Well, it's messy." He enjoyed our meetings back again for more. So, say hello.
Hello. It's a blessing to be here and to see on how things are working in a transparency way. You guys are blessed. You have a very good nation. It's an inritage that you have inherited from your ancestors or forefathers. So, hang on with that. I believe that you will leave a legal legacy to the coming generation. God bless you all.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else? Let's move on to our consent agenda. Would you read the consent items, please?
To approve the public hearing, regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of September 8th, 2009. To approve the two lot certified survey map as proposed by Roger and Fay Schlemmer, 117 and 1121 Summer Street, with the condition that the common wall agreement is executed and recorded at the St. Croix County Register of Deeds office, and a copy is recorded and a copy of the recorded common wall agreement is provided to the city of Hudson. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $799,92.95, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B retailer's license to the Christian Community Campus Foundation Incorporated to sell wine at their CCH Foundation Wine Fest event on November 6th, 2009, at 1312 Wisconsin Street, to place on file the finance officer's monthly report. To approve the Seventh Annual Red Ribbon Week 5K Walk Run on Saturday, October 17th, 2009, from 9:30 a.m. to 11 o'clock a.m., beginning and ending at the Hudson High School on Vian Street, to place on file the joint fire board minutes of September 14th, 2009, and the Public Utility Commission minutes of September 8th, 2009, and the joint library board minutes of August 10th, 2009. And that is all.
We have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion by Bernard and second by Wyland. Roll call vote, please.
Wyland?
Here.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Okay, so the consent agenda items are approved. We will move on to the Plan Commission. We've got final development plans for Hudson supportive housing at 123 Heritage Boulevard North, north of Heritage Boulevard and east of Tribute Avenue, Heritage Greens Planned Residential Development by Accessible Space Incorporated, ASI. Mr. Darnold's here to tell us about this item.
Thank you. Accessible Space is proposing a fifteen-unit supportive housing project that is funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The project does have a couple of considerations which are a little bit unusual. One is that there is no garage parking on site. That's an element to provide greater affordability of the units. Mr. Michael Nicely is here tonight from InDesign, architectural firm, to answer any questions. The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the final development plans for the fifteen-unit supportive housing project at 123 Heritage Boulevard, as proposed by Accessible Space Incorporated, with the condition that the final plan be revised to incorporate the comments and recommendations of the city engineer and fire department. There were several city engineer comments in the past week. Those have been pared down to just a few, and Chuck and I had lengthy conversation last week that we feel comfortable recommending this with the condition that the plans be revised and resubmitted. If there's any questions, Mr. Michael Nicely is here tonight, project architect. If you want to see the elevations of the buildings or general site plan. I'm really quite excited about this project. This is a project for persons with disabilities. It's not a project, we don't have this type of project anywhere in Hudson. I just think it's going to be a very, very good asset to our community.
I'll move for approval on the committee recommendation, as long as it, and incorporate the recommendations of the city engineer and fire department.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I must recuse myself.
And Mr. O'Malley has recused. Well, I'm also pleased that this is going forward. It's, wasn't so long ago, we had a gentleman in a wheelchair here testify to us about the need for housing for people with disabilities in Hudson. We know the need for elder housing and a variety of assisted living and elder care living, that kind of thing. But this is something a little different, and I think it matches, fits pretty well with this Heritage Greens whole philosophy of mixture of uses in close proximity, where you've got residential along with some shops and things that we hope will develop out there over time. This one's going to be on one of the greens, where you might be able to wheel your wheelchair right out and actually go and shop or do something recreationally and so on. And so, I think it's pretty exciting potential for it. And I know it's had a lot of support, so. No further comments? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Final development plans are approved with the conditions. All right. And then, the next item is, again, the final development plans for the Hudson Elder Housing at 100 Heirloom, east of Proposed Heirloom Extension and south of Proposed Ivy Green Extension, in Heritage Greens Planned Residential Development, again, by Accessible Space Incorporated.
As the mayor alluded to, Accessible Space also will be the project sponsor for this. Again, it's a project funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It does provide affordable housing for elderly citizens aged sixty-two and older. There'll be thirty-two units. Again, an aspect of affordability, two aspects of affordability. One is, there will be no garages on this project, similar to the Croixview Apartments Complex on Second Street. Secondly, there will be onsite filtration system underneath the pavement, which is an unusual element for a community of our size. It's more typical in much more urban areas. But it is a project, or that stormwater system is something that Chuck Schwartz has very carefully reviewed, and the big, the main element of that is that that system just has to be, continue to be maintained, very similar to septic system. You've got to maintain it on a periodic basis. The Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the final development plans for the thirty-two unit elder housing project, 100 Heirloom, as proposed by Accessible Space Incorporated, with the condition that the plans be amended per the recommendations of city engineer and fire department, and no building permit or permit to start work be issued until the city engineer receives and approves the amended plans. That last condition of issuing the building permit or permit, site work permit, there were a number of engineering issues. Again, those have been pared down to a relatively few number of issues. But currently, Heirloom is under construction. Ivy Green will be a private street that'll be under construction this fall or next year. So, we just want to be very careful that the plans in their final form are amended to accommodate the work that's currently going on in that neighborhood with other private and public street projects. As far as the pavement of Heirloom and also the pavement of Heritage Greens, those should be done next, this week or early next week. So, accessibility, road accessibility for fire department EMS will be very good in the very near future for these projects. I would offer, offer a suggestion of amendment that one of the things that this project does have to do, Chuck and I just talked about this on Friday, is that there be a proposed maintenance agreement on this stormwater system. So, it's very common now. We have examples that were, and I've been able to call up on the Internet. We'll put that together. Kathy, just, basically, it just assures us that the maintenance that's required for this filtration system will be done on a periodic basis.
Plan Commission recommends approval. What's your pleasure on this one?
Once again, I must recuse myself.
Recused. Mr. O'Malley has recused.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve with the committee recommendation and staff conditions.
Just real quick, Danny, I don't know if I've seen in the past few years as many bullet points at the fire department, and those have all been addressed through these plans?
Well, some of those are more interior improvements versus site improvements. So, generally, as the state, state plans are submitted, or the building plans, excuse me, are submitted to the state for review, that's the time that those are addressed. So, as the state plans come back, the fire department and myself will check, make sure those are all. But those are really more building-oriented comments versus site comments, which typically are a little more oriented in this type of development plan, I assume.
Thanks.
I have a question about the maintenance agreement with the filtering system. You said you put together something that there would be ongoing maintenance and work with the developer on that. What's the plan or how, if the maintenance isn't taken care of, how do you handle that or what are your plans for that?
Well, essentially, that plan will be, will be on file at the Register of Deeds office, but I think, you know, in part, this is forty, forty-year funding committed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I guess going back to them and trying to work out any of those issues. I mean, part of the funding is continued maintenance and upkeep of the building during the forty-year process, so.
Is that a quarterly inspection?
Well, I don't know. Chuck, what do you think? This most likely be every year or two.
Yeah, it'll be an annual type of thing, or they just proof that they've looked at it.
It's like somebody's giving proof that their septic system's been inspected. I mean, it'd be a sign off by a maintenance group that does that.
Thank you.
Why don't you reiterate, just because I think it's worth mentioning again, about how competitive the application process was for these and, you know, the fact that these two projects received the grant and how wide an area and how many projects there were. You know the details of that better than I do.
Well, essentially, there's very limited funding for this, these two projects, under the 811 Supportive Housing Project, which is for the persons with disabilities, and then the 211, or 202 program. Essentially, the application was for the state of Wisconsin, Minnesota, Michigan, Illinois, I believe, and city of Hudson was the only communities that got funded for both projects, not just one or the other.
And to go back, Randy, and answer the, you know, like, for example, Hudson Housing Authority was established years ago through a HUD program to bring senior housing to Hudson, and we've, you know, that was just a different way of doing it. And I would say this is more like a modern program to do a similar kind of thing. So, it's privately run, but HUD is involved in making a commitment for, for the proposed life of the, well, I don't know how long is it?
Forty years.
Forty years. So, it's not just a construction grant. It's actual an operational grant that they're doing too. So, and that's partly why these are coveted and competitive and were, says something about this project, I think, that we got both of those approved in this development. Okay. Further comments? Questions?
I have one more question about the parking. There's a thirty-two lot, or thirty-two space lot that'll be put in?
Thirty-two spaces on the lot. So, there's, there's thirty-two units. There'd be thirty-two off-street parking places. So, those potentially could, you know, if every tenant has a car or every unit has a car, then all thirty-two spaces are going to be taken. Because this is affordable housing, ASI's history on this type of project is about forty to fifty percent of the units are, actually have vehicles. The nice thing about this consideration is for visitors in, they're coming to visit tenants, so it's the, there is on-street parking, diagonal parking, not on both Heirloom and Heritage Boulevard, if in a very short walking distance. So, if, you know, it's not like all, you know, somebody has a party, excuse, you know, that might be the fact, but, I mean, you know, somebody's having a party and has four guests, or they're having a birthday party or something and five or six guests, there should be adequate parking on Heirloom or Heritage Boulevard for that type of activity. So, that's the reason I feel much more comfortable. Again, trying to get these sites as condensed as possible is part of gaining the affordability. I mean, if you have a large, a lot of extra parking that's not used, it costs more to develop. And to get to the affordability level, some of these considerations, such as the onsite filtration system and limit number of parking house, makes those projects more affordable.
One of, one of the things that came up in Plan Commission on this one is the height of the building. It's very attractive design on it. It's got varying roof heights. It, it's a big building. The closest thing to this that we've built in Hudson would probably be at CCH when they added the big three-story. Would I be right?
Wintergreen would be a similar.
Wintergreen. And, you know, Wintergreen is tucked down in the valley so much that you aren't really aware of how tall that building is until you go stand and look up at it. And we just don't have that many three-story plus a big pitched roof in Hudson. Now, this'll be one. From the one direction, if you look at your site plan map, you can see that there's very steep topography. So, from the, from Highway 35, the view of this building is partially hidden, because there's, there's quite a hillside in back there. It's, what, maybe fifteen?
Very, varied heights, yeah. Fifteen to twenty in some spots.
Fifteen to twenty feet. So, what you'll see of it from the road is probably about, you know, half or two-thirds of it. From the other direction, when we did the approvals of moving around the various commercial uses and so on, we looked at taller buildings and what the impact would be. I honestly think that as far as the residences further to the west, this building serves to buffer the road noise and things from Highway 35, and I think it'll be an attractive addition to that neighborhood. So, we've looked at this pretty closely at Plan Commission and tried to factor in all those things. I'd recommend approval. Any other comments? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. And one recusal. Motion carries and development plans are approved with the conditions. Thank you. Next, we move on to the Finance Committee, and we've got applications for operators' licenses.
I'll recuse myself, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Morissette is recused, and there's an issue sheet recommending approval of all of these. There are some, we've had more and more of these each time, and I think with your permission, I'll dispense with the reading of them. And say that the Finance Committee recommends approval of all these on the staff issue sheet.
Move for approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
We're seeing more of these, because we are encouraging the establishments to have plenty of people on site, as opposed to sometimes not having anybody on site. So, I think that's why you're seeing an increase in these, which is good.
At the time that we began to do our inspections, our annual inspections of our licensed establishments, it came to light that our enforcement and their following of the ordinance about having licensed operators there maybe wasn't as tight as it could be. And partly, that might have been misunderstanding. And so, this year before they picked up their liquor license for the year, there was a educational meeting, informational meeting, that they were required to attend. And the requirement to have these licensed operators was explained, and so, here you are. So, we're seeing a lot more of these. We're seeing them come in by the dozens now, as opposed to two and three and four. So, any questions? Discussion?
I was gonna say, in this last year, I believe, David Cooper just been doing a lot more reviews too, going in and, because he has those quarterly reviews of each establishment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And these licenses are approved. Next, we've got number five, consider redemption of the Water System Revenue Bond Series 2001B, dated July 1st, 2001. And consider adoption of Resolution 15-09. Finance Committee recommended approval and adoption of Resolution-1509.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Brokaw?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
You may consider adoption of the resolution. So moved.
Second.
Without Resolution 15-09.
The motion to adopt. And a second, any discussion? Let's point out that we're going to save how much? $416,000 in interest expense by doing this? Further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the resolution is adopted. Next item is to review options and costs for bridge repairs. The Finance Committee recommended that that be referred back to the Public Works Committee to develop a recommendation, come back at our next meeting. Next would be number eight, consider revisions to the city's procurement policy. And on that one, the Finance Committee recommended that staff, being Finance Officer Caruso and Administrator Willie and myself, work on making some amendments, and we'll bring that one back to the next meeting as well. Number nine, consider recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Room Tax Committee. This is a committee consisting of alderperson Wyland, alderperson Bernard, and myself. We've met, I believe, four times. We did make a recommendation to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee has adopted or recommended approval of that. It's on the table before you. I'll let Lori present it. I think it's got some good improvements.
Could I interject?
Yes.
Does Kim have a copy of this and a glance?
Yes. And, oh, just so each of you knows, so, here was, this is an update on room tax collections year-to-date, this one page. First quarter was down about $3,000 over last year, and second quarter similarly was down about $5,000. And, so, we'll have to take that into account as we budget for next year. There's an uncertain economy right now, and travel somewhat down. With that, then, this is, this is the amended draft version, and y'all had this on your table, too. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. After we faced some of the challenges we did last fall with allocating room tax dollars, I think there was a desire on the part of the full council to come up with a more transparent and methodical and objective approach to allocating these dollars. What we've come up with as a committee is shown. There's really three buckets that we're looking at. The first is a Tourism Bureau allocation, which we tentatively set at sixty-five percent. There's a City Tourism and Beautification Projects bucket, that would be twenty-five to thirty-five percent of those room tax dollars. And the last category is an Events and Activities Grants program, which would be between zero and ten percent of the room tax dollars. I'm not going to read through all of these points, but I'll touch on some of the highlights. The Tourism Bureau, we set it at sixty-five percent. I'll talk a little bit more about that exact number, but the goal there really is to help boost all of our attractions in the city by increasing advertising capability, by getting into some new media markets, by maximizing our available dollars through matching grants. The next area is the City Tourism and Beautification. Again, we set that at twenty-five to thirty-five percent. These are projects that we really feel are a benefit to residents and to tourists alike. There are city projects included in this pool that include things like the banners, the holiday lights, flower baskets. The list also includes programs which have a unique heritage to Hudson. Things that fall into this category would be the Octagon House and the cemetery, or have an ambassador role to represent Hudson. So, that would include Miss Hudson and VFW. See, on the next page, we listed all of the items that would fall into that city beautification and tourism category. And the final category is the grant category. We said this would range from zero to ten percent of the room tax dollars in a given year. A group of about three to five members would be appointed by the mayor, along with consultation of the Tourism Bureau. That committee would establish a process. They'd advertise, and they'd review the grant applications. Any nonprofit organization which promotes tourism within the city of Hudson could apply for these grants. Special consideration would be given to applicants who can draw large numbers of people to the city and which would have a large economic impact. The grant award recommendations would be presented to Finance with final approval at the city council level. These are tentative dates we, we put in this plan. The grant applications would be due October 15th. They'd be reviewed by the They'd be reviewed by the committee and awarded no later than December first. Funds would then be dispersed at quarterly intervals over the following calendar year. The grants wouldn't exceed three thousand dollars, and any organization could apply, reapply annually. And on the last page, there's two key recommendations. We really tried to figure out as a committee, how do we administer this plan when we don't know what the exact dollar figure is that's gonna come in, what the receipts will be in a given year? And so, we set out this recommendation. That thirty-five percent of the room tax revenue shall be allocated to City Tourism and Beautification and the Grant Program. Those are gonna be fixed dollar amounts as we go into budget time. And here's where the flex is going to be. The remaining room tax revenue shall be allocated to Tourism Bureau, which will include chamber dues. So, that sixty-five percent going to the Tourism Bureau in a good year may be a slightly higher amount. But if room tax receipts come in a little bit lower, that's where the flex is gonna be, and fewer dollars would go to the Tourism Bureau. Some hypothetical amounts are shown below. This is based on a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That may be a bit optimistic at this point. But nonetheless, you see, you see the example given. So, that's a recommendation that came out of the Room Tax Ad-Hoc Committee and was approved by Finance.
Questions?
Yes, Randy.
So, how come you wouldn't have gone sixty-eight percent?
Because a year ago, I guess it was, I think it was December eighteenth, we set it at sixty percent last year, sixty-five percent this year. And we, I think, wanted to honor that.
Are we gonna do this yearly?
Are we going to do this yearly? I think this is a framework off of which we can work.
Because we all know that they're gonna come back and ask eventually for that seventy percent.
And next year? She says so.
And so, why wouldn't we do that now?
Because a year ago, we said we would shoot for sixty-five percent in two thousand and ten.
And I have a different answer entirely. Lori's answer is correct. And I think the committee has done, the Ad-Hoc Committee's done good work here, and I think the recommendations are well-informed. There is a provision that's not, there is something that's not provided for. And I'd like to see some thought given to that. And that is still along the lines of tourism and advancing the interests of Hudson. Last year, when we talked about this, we talked a lot about return on investment. And it's too soon to know if there's a return on investment. It's not knowable at this point. Numbers are down. We've thrown more money against the wall, but the numbers are still down. That's quite likely just a function of the current economy. So, it's not knowable whether our increased investment in tourism has borne any fruit at all. It may, it may not. It is not knowable. What is knowable is that there are some areas that actually need some funds that have to do with tourism. We were about, we will be discussing one at Public Works tomorrow, and that is the Walnut Street Bridge Project. That's gonna cost us some money to fix that bridge, and it is part of Lakefront Park, which is, I don't think anybody's gonna argue with, with us that that is the most visited park in our system here in Hudson by people who are from out of town, tourists, visitors. And to have no money from room tax dollars to go to the general fund, as they used to, we will have to look elsewhere for the money to fix part of our tourist attraction, which is Lakefront Park. I would suggest that maybe since we don't have any return on investment figures that we can rely on at this point, that we do not go to the sixty-five percent. I think we're under unusual circumstances this year. I don't think anybody's gonna argue about that. And that we reduce the amount to what it was last year, which is forty percent. Because we're gonna need some of those dollars to fix the very things that people are coming here to visit.
Could, could I ask Lori, Lee, how you came about that sixty-five percent? Am I missing something?
No.
What was the thought process?
It was the vote last year.
It was a vote last year.
No, I understand.
Yeah. So, we just, we stuck with that.
Pardon me? From what we did last year?
Yeah. I, I didn't hear the question.
Are we accelerating it from what we did last year?
No.
No.
Well, last year, we're at sixty percent, and this year, we'd planned to go to sixty-five.
Last, last year, I brought my recommendation to you without a lot of input from you and asked for your approval. You granted the approval, but in the motion from this Ad-Hoc Committee and asked that we study it and work as a council on this for the future. That didn't lock in that we're gonna go with what I had proposed, that we go to sixty percent last year. We did. And that I proposed that we go to sixty-five percent this year. And we discussed about trying to get to a higher number. But that, you know, we don't bind future councils. Last year's council didn't bind this year's council. So, this is a new year. You can decide to do whatever you want to, Randy. I think you and I are in agreement. And, and I think out of our Ad-Hoc Committee, since Lori authored this, I think she's in agreement, too, that we should get maximum visibility in tourism attraction to our city. This is best done by our tourism experts, i.e. the Tourism Bureau. I think you agree with that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I agree with that, too. I'm sensitive to what Scott says, the fact that we need to take care of Lakefront Park and other attractions in the city. But I'll also point out that while we spend the money on, for example, magazine ads, and then we measure according to heads and beds. Heads and beds are down. But we've had a phenomenal summer in our downtown restaurant business. When you go talk with them, I mean, the economy may be down, but business at the restaurants is holding pretty good. And so, you could say that, you know, something good is happening in downtown Hudson. So, we're doing something right. And we've got some momentum going there. And that's a subjective statement from me. I can't quantify it. Maybe somebody could. And we don't really necessarily even have a mechanism to quantify visits for things like that, do we? I don't think so.
It does, it does speak to a different metric, though, right now.
It's a different metric.
And certainly, when we're looking at investments, we can, I think we could ask for different metrics, you know?
Well, a visit to Lakefront Park would be a different metric, as you just said, for the people, the reasons people are coming here. Well, I mean, you could measure how many people actually come, but I don't know how you'd do it. You know, heads in beds is what we've got. We can measure those, and those dollars are down. They can be down for a variety of reasons. In economic times, I mean, if they cut the room rate to stay full, they may still be staying full, but there's less percentage coming out in revenue.
But, but heads, it, there really, when you're advertising for the city of Hudson, you're not just advertising for the hotels. You're advertising for the FIPS. You're advertising for the, the restaurants. You're advertising for whatever. So, it does bring the question, how do we, what kind of metrics can we get to say how effective the advertising is? It may be very effective, but it would be nice to know when we're investing almost a hundred thousand dollars that we're getting a return on it.
Well, may I ask a question? We may be catching Kim off-guard here, because she had asked till October to make her presentation for next year's budget. And I would assume that, as a good presenter, she would include these, this kind of information as how, increased attendance in the FIPS, for instance. Yes, no?
Well, and I, I apologize, because I had told Kim that I intended to ask your indulgent to move her up from the last item on our agenda to an earlier spot so that she could actually make her report before we brought this item up. And then it slipped my mind, and I haven't done that. If you'd like to do that, we could still do that. We could hear her most recent report before we take any further action on this. We're just trying to move the process along. The committee finally came up with the recommendation, and so, here we are.
I, I agree with moving the process along. It was okay with Kim that the process moved into October, and I'm fine with that. Absent any paperwork from her, which I assume she's not about to distribute, we, we would not get any facts and figures as to what has, what has happened. Where are these metrics that Lee just described? I think these are knowable things. Is attendance at the FIPS up or down? Same for other establishments. The restaurants you mentioned are in my district, and I know very well how they're doing, and they're doing fine. I think we've had a lot of day trippers coming over from the Twin Cities doing staycations, if you will. And that's great for those few restaurants downtown, and I'm glad to see that they're healthy. But there's so much more that Hudson has to offer that Kim can report on, and I think we ought to give her the opportunity to do so.
Well, then.
I'll be happy to do that.
I, I see no reason why with. We've had no motion here. We've had presentation of a committee report, and have we had a motion? No? Well, let's just do that. Let's, let's introduce unfinished business. Without objection, we'll change our agenda around it. You're in charge. Do you object?
Uh, no, I don't object. My motion would be that we postpone this for two weeks to our next meeting until Kim can present us with the paperwork that she's apparently going to be discussing at some point.
Uh, there's a motion. Hold on, Kim. There's a motion to postpone this item for two weeks. Is there a second? Is there a second? A second to the motion. Motion fails for lack of a second, Lee.
That's right. I was hoping Kim would provide something to answer your question.
Well, why don't we hear, she's on the agenda already to give us an update. Why don't we hear what she's, what we've got? And I apologize to all of you, because it would've made more sense. But because this is, was under unfinished business, it tends to come at the end of the agenda. All right, Kim, you're back again.
I'm back. Okay. You're right, Scott. I don't have all of the details you've just mentioned. Like, I didn't get the exact statistics from the FIPS, which I can do at a later meeting. But I can provide you with some updates, I think, from the last time I was here, which was just last month. The reason I'm back again tonight, I guess, was out of respect for you all, because I know you're doing your budget planning now. And I thought, rather than wait another week or two or three or four, I would come in and make my request now. Also, very happy to hear that the Ad-Hoc Committee had, has discussed this and come up, I think, with a really great plan. So, as I mentioned, and as you, you can see in part in your packets that I gave you, Hudson has been very fortunate to be the recipient of a lot of media coverage in, in the recent year in addition to not just advertising in magazines, but also television and the like. We also have been fortunate to have applied for and received the Joint Effort Marketing Grant from the State Department of Tourism two years in a row, which isn't an easy task, I must say. Also, you, you need to remember that we are very well partnered within the state, not only in this state, but in the region, and also with many chamber committees that give us the best promotional coverage available. And I want to thank the city here for supporting the Tourism Bureau as you have in this past, past many years, and, and for the increases in funding that you awarded last year. Our promotion and marketing efforts awarded a consistent increase in our website. Here's a couple of statistics that might help you. Our website hits have increased almost thirty percent in the last year. Our tourism phone calls and emails have increased substantially, too. I would say in the average of fifteen to twenty percent. And also, our tourism walk-in traffic has increased substantially. As the City Council plans the city's budget for two thousand and ten, the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau respectfully requests your approval of the sixty-five percent room tax collected to be allocated to, to, to the Tourism Bureau in two thousand and ten. As discussed, and you've mentioned tonight at the City Council meeting in December two thousand and eight, and approved for two thousand and nine in your attached report, an incremental room tax allocation increase over three years was mapped out to move the Tourism Bureau to the new seventy percent statute by two thousand and eleven. And the reason we did that really was to enable the organizations who had been recipients in funds in the past to make adjustments to their budgets. I did include some information from the Wisconsin Innkeepers Association, which concurs the fact of what the mayor said, that occupancy overall in the state is down. However, in our region, you'll notice that they don't cover this succinctly, but as far as ocular monomony, percentages of decrease are much lower than the rest of the state, to the tune of three or four percent. I did contact all of our local properties. They are in that range. However, one or two of them have mentioned that they are level, which means from the State Department or the Innkeepers Association, level is the new increase. So, that's, that's the thought process in their budgeting plan. It's, I think, really, as we think about this, it's more important than ever for the Tourism Bureau to continue to promote Hudson as a tourism destination. Our advertising and promotional efforts for two thousand and nine have targeted the group travel market, motor coach markets. Those are succinctly heads and beds market that we're working on now. Tourists from outside our region, in addition to the campaign for the Twin Cities travelers to come to Hudson, and I think you see some of that with the vibrancy that we have in our downtown area, in our, in our parks and the like. Also, besides the website hit, tourism, phone calls, inquiries, email inquiries, and out-of-market inquiries that we're receiving from our events, like Spirit of the St. Croix days, the State Department of Tourism does require us, as recipients of a grant, to do all of the recording and statistics regarding heads and beds, regarding economic impact in your community, regarding input from restaurateurs and the like. So, after this event is over this weekend, we will have to make that report, and I will share that with you. Last year, if you remember, the economic impact for Spirit of the St. Croix days was well over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to this community. And that's not meaning that that's what we made. That's what our merchants in our community was awarded by tourists coming to town and spending money. The rest I have in your report just gives examples of, of information that you received from my last visit to you a month ago, and also gives you the statistics from the Wisconsin Innkeepers Association. Please know that my Board of Directors is also very astute in wanting to know information about funding and spending and proof source and the like. So, we do keep a great eye on that.
I'll move for approval on the recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Committee of the sixty-five.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Morissette and a second by Virchill to approve the recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Committee. Any discussion?
Yeah. One of the things I wanted to bring up, and I think Scott outlined it really well, and that is, we are looking for, we made a significant additional investment in tourism last year. With this plan, we're making an additional investment. And before we go to the seventy percent, you know, whether it's, because we don't, we're not, by law, have to go to the seventy percent. I think we have to see, is the methodology for this investment working or not? Because what we're doing by going to the seventy percent would be taking monies away from other things that we can invest in and are working quite well for us. So, before we go to the seventy percent, I think there has to be some really good reason to cut out granting programs and cut out some of these other things to reallocate money.
I have a question about the recommendation. I thought that was, it was a solid thirty-five percent, and the balance would be going to the Tourism Bureau.
Correct. That is what we intended.
Based on the budget, with the beginning of the year.
It'd be budgeted at sixty-five percent, but the Tourism Bureau portion could be higher than sixty-five, could be lower, depending on actual receipts.
So, what we tried to draft here would be that we will come up with an estimated revenue at budget time each year. Thirty-five percent of that will go into those two areas. Zero to ten in the grants, zero to ten percent in the grants, and twenty-five to thirty-five percent in the local beautification and tourism support. You know, it's hard to say whether fireworks is tourism or what, but it sure brings a lot of people downtown. So, then, for example, if, if an organization applied and received a grant of three thousand dollars, and they could count on the fact that they will get their three thousand dollars no matter what the actual receipts turn out to be. There's only one organization that won't know that for certain, and that'll be the Tourism Bureau. But on the flip side, if the receipts exceed that estimate that we did at budget time, then they may actually receive more than sixty-five percent of what was estimated. They'll receive sixty-five percent of the actual, whether it's higher or lower. To go back to the comment about what will we do, I'll point out that our two thousand and eight collections were a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars last year. And when you look at, you know, we've done some kind of conservative budgeting as we would. I think we projected maybe only around a hundred and fifty-two or a hundred and fifty, or something like that. And so, you know, last year, we exceeded what we brought in. This year, now, we estimated about nine thousand dollars. A little less, but, you know, on the other hand, so it's, there's that. But the, under this plan, I'm not certain that we will move this again next year to seventy percent. In fact, I'd say maybe it stays right here for a year or so, and we try it, and we get, get some more metrics about things and work on that. I, I, my vision last- I, I, my vision last year went as far as saying, let's go to sixty, let's go to sixty-five. And I, I will correct you, Kim, here a little bit, I've done it before, but, you know, the comment always comes up about the new room tax law. Well, we were the original room tax. I mean, we did room tax before all those other people did it, and we aren't going to ever be forced by the legislature to go to seventy percent. That doesn't mean that we can't raise it for, for what we're going to spend on that.
I'm sorry if I mis, if I...
Well, I don't want people to have the impression that we're somehow not following the law. We are clearly following the law and then some. And, and if you add in the, the portion in the city beautification and tourism part, you could make a claim that we're spending eighty-plus percent, and I think it'd be a pretty legitimate claim. And so, we're, we are supporting tourism here, we're committed to it. I think you're doing a good job with it, and with, with the team, team approach, I think we can do an even better job in the future. I'd encourage you to vote yes.
May I comment on...
Yes.
Something that we've been talking about? I'd like to present another idea. First of all, I don't think there would be any harm in postponing this for a couple of weeks, as Kim has just mentioned. She would have a lot more additional information for us two weeks from now, some of it state-mandated, dealing with events that are occurring here in Hudson, and we would be able to make a much better informed decision. However, you, you really have outlined, actually, a perfect reason not to increase the allocation, which is that if we do fix, as Laurie has pointed out, if we do fix the grants, for instance, certain amount of beautification, for beautification, and Tourism Bureau gets to keep whatever's left over, as Devin just mentioned, well, then that is their incentive. Because, based, that's a performance bonus, and they will then get to eat what they bake themselves. And so, there's no need for us to artificially increase this at all, because if they are successful in their endeavors, they will generate more money. There is a fixed portion of thirty-five percent, but they get to keep everything else, so that's how they get their increases.
But that, what was the motion? Wasn't the motion sixty-five percent? We didn't fix that thirty-five percent. I think the...
No, the committee recommendation is thirty-five percent fixed.
The sixty-five percent could actually be lower, but I, what was...
Could be higher, could be lower.
Right. In a year like this, it would be lower.
But based on their overall performance in the years to come, it should be higher, and that, I would say, would be the best result for them and the ultimate judgment on their performance.
The committee recommendation's on the top of the third page.
Right. Thank you. And I, I thought Randy's motion was to set the sixty-five percent. So, if I misunderstood that, I apologize.
It's the recommendation.
Yep.
Okay.
The written recommendation from the committee.
That was just a little fast on the second. He cut me off there.
Well, I'll agree with you, Scott, in, in that, you know, unlike when I came forward with my best idea and presented it to you, I mean, here we had a committee that met several times, and when I walked in tonight, that was not in my mind, but as we discussed it, it kind of came out of a collaborative thing, trying to work on some things, and once it came forward, I really liked the idea. Because just for that thing, I said, it's a motivation, it's an incentive, it's how it ought to be. It's, it's how that type of work ought to be done, really.
Well, instead, I mean, this way, we would be paying the, quote, "sales commission" without any sales, and they should make the sales and then keep the commission. That's a simplistic way of putting it.
Further comments?
I'll be voting yes. I think we don't need to wait. I don't need any more information. I think we have enough information tonight, and I will be voting yes.
I'll have to vote no, because we do need more information, I believe, because we have other pressing needs here in the city that we could use this money for in, in the general fund.
The proof of their hard work is paying off.
In these down numbers? Well, I don't understand that statement, Randy. How is it paying off?
The numbers are all down. You said it yourself downtown. It's great, looks great, they're doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Restaurants are full.
Yes, but...
They're getting out there and marketing. It's right in those papers there.
Guys, let's go one at a time.
Yeah.
Randy, you got anything more to say?
Oh, great job.
Scott?
No, never mind.
All right. Ready to vote? Last call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who say no.
No.
Five to one, motion carries. Thank you, Kim. That takes us down to consider revisions to the, okay, we did that. That takes us on to unfinished business, update on projects. Mr. Chuck Schwartz, city engineer, is here.
Good evening. I'll start off with Eleventh Street improvements. They have poured all the curb and the valley gutters forward today. They'll be spending the remainder of the week backfilling the curb, and come next week, they'll be, uh, beginning the milling and the paving. So, they are still on schedule. Cooley Road, we did have a pre-construction meeting on that last week, and this week you'll start seeing the curb removal and replacement, but the milling and paving won't actually occur till mid-October.
So, Eleventh Street will be pretty well?
Yep. Thought was, get that wrapped up, and then...
Okay, do we need to discuss doing the total mill here? That was a potential change order. Is that resolved? Do you need our stamp of approval on that?
Uh, no, technically, I think that can be handled administratively, but I'll, just to enlighten everyone, what's going on is, you know, upon reviewing the bid prices, and then the actual cuts out there, and, you know, some of the pavement that I'll need to be saw cutting, we think it's beneficial to the city to mill out additional pavement on the south end, and then just repave that full width instead of just milling over those patches, because our patching price versus our paving price, and where you'll see a savings is, is, you know, in, in future maintenance costs, as far as crack sealing, those reflective cracks and everything else.
You mean the east side, not the south side?
Oh, yeah. I meant the southern side of Eleventh Street in general, where, where we've, we've done the digging of, of the water main, but you're correct, the east side.
So, did the cost of that come in under five thousand?
Uh, no, it's approximately sixty-one hundred. I thought it was five percent. So...
Well...
Yeah.
I guess we're, it was, I want us to, I want you to have a number, and I want us to approve it.
Okay.
That it's approved here tonight. Can we do that?
Yeah.
The estimated...
What's the total contract?
Total contract is, uh, four hundred and twenty thousand, sound correct? The, the public works portion of it's like a hundred and fifty thousand.
Explain again, what end are you talking about? Are you talking about...
Near, the south end, near Taco Jones. You know, where we put the water main in?
Yeah. Ripping it all out now, instead of patching over it?
Yeah, because of the patching cost versus purely the paving.
Yep.
And the removing. It just seemed advantageous to pay that increased dollar amount and get a better product.
About one point five percent of the project.
But it's, it is approximately...
Well, here's part of my issue here.
Just procedurally, I want us to be a little bit clear on this, because when it first came up, the question was, can I approve it? I think, and I said, well, probably if it's small enough, Devin can approve it, and I think he's been given authorization to do change orders up to five thousand dollars in the past, was what the policy was. Now, so maybe there's some legal limit?
Yeah, over a change order over an entire contract. I believe the percentage is between, that you can't change it.
Our policy has been that Devin can approve everything up to five percent of the contract, so he doesn't have to come back to council unless it's over five percent.
Is that written?
Is that in the policy somewhere?
Probably. Actually, we did bring it to council, uh, nine years ago, and we did adopt it at that time.
So, we're looking for an official motion, just for him to do it.
For six thousand, sixty-one hundred dollars?
Move for a work order change.
Sixty-two.
Is that what you want?
Yep.
For sixty-two hundred dollars?
Estimated, yeah.
Estimated. I'll move.
Second.
And it sounds like it's not actually required, because it's not over five percent. Call the question?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You just spent some money while you were gone, Dean.
What else can we do? This is a process that seems to work well.
I told Laurie she's gonna have to sub for me for a minute, 'cause my, my scratchy throat is giving out. Thank you. Okay, anything else?
Not, well, that answer, is there anything else on Cooley or Eleventh that you want? You know, that middle, our preference wouldn't be milling and paving mid-October, but that's just how the schedule's gonna work out, and you have it in your standard specifications that paving after October fifteenth is, is subject to, uh, city approval, so it's gotta be over fifty degrees before we'll allow that. But we're not concerned, because, you know, generally, you do have some, some good weather well into November.
Okay.
Uh, in regard to the other projects, they will be on Wednesday, paving Heritage Boulevard and heirloom, that area of, and the Heritage Green development, and they're, they're working on testing of that Tower Road water main. Other than that, there's some miscellaneous items on some private developments, but do you have any specific questions?
Yes, Goodwill's, proposed Goodwill store at the identity, former Denny Hector site. That's still moving forward for construction to begin this month?
Uh...
Your, your notes say that you do expect that.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't changed that since the previous month. Guess that, you know, they come in the early part of September, there was talk, and they were wanting, there was information being passed back and forth, and then it, it's had a standstill again, so, yeah.
This is a topic that I think we all get asked about.
Okay.
And my understanding is that it is not moving forward at this moment.
Yeah, I haven't, I'll, I'll get an update from them specifically by the next meeting. And by the next meeting, too, Tom and I talked about sitting down with your building inspector as well as Sandy, and just going through all of these, and make sure that we're getting as many of these buttoned up this year as, as practical.
Danny, you have some insight there?
I'd like to speak to that question. There were two issues that needed to be resolved before they could get their building prepared. One was a letter of credit for the restoration of the streets, curb and gutter and so forth. We've not seen that yet. Secondly, was a easement, for cross-easement between the property to the west. We wanted that, make sure that property owner understood that there's gonna be construction on that easement area. We've not received that. We've not received an explanation why the project's not moving ahead, but at, at this time, there's only no indication to the building inspections or my department that the project is going to move ahead. So, that's an unknown situation at this point.
Thanks, Danny.
Question for Chuck. Eleventh Street, when would be your best estimate that a road will be open and completed?
Um, well, they, they're talking about milling the middle of next week and then a couple of days of paving, so it'll be that first week in October.
Okay. Provided there's no weather problems or anything like that, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
I had a question about number eleven, that, the stormwater ponds. Is that still pending, or is that complete?
There, there are some work order items left on that. Tomorrow, my inspector is gonna be meeting out there with the general contractor to repair some erosion control items. Specifically, that the stormwater ponds, I do believe those have been repaired, but there are still some, some minor items that are still hanging out there.
And Chuck, do you have a timeframe for Mount Croy for those residents up there?
Um...
You don't even have...
They were gonna, they were go, that would have been, I expect that to be milled late next week, and probably paving the following week. Is that the time for that, Tom?
The part of Cooley Road?
Yep. No, a part of Eleventh Street, the Mount Croy. So, that, that would be the schedule. I haven't heard any different from my inspector since I last talked, so...
Okay, any other questions? Chuck? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Finally, we have update on request for Hunter Hill streetlights. Mr. Ron Troyer, step right up. You've worked out something. Tell us about it.
Well, at the last meeting, we appreciated the opportunity to gather as an association, Stone Pine Two, with the other association that's on Hunter Hill Road, and Pat Murphy is the president of that association. Pat's here tonight with me, and we discussed what was offered to us, and after consideration and looking at the costs and the burdensome effort it might be on the city staff to collect twenty-eight dollars from a hundred and twenty households, we agreed as an associations that we would pay the twenty-five fifty cost of the three streetlights, and our understanding would be then that the city would assume then control and operational expenses of the streetlights at that point. So, we'll pay for the streetlights, you pay for the lighting, and we'll all go home happy.
I'll move to recommend that we do so.
A motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. All who say no, done.
We look forward to working with city staff as quickly as possible and excel energy in getting those lights installed. And as a citizen, I just want to comment on projects that you just covered. I am a citizen who is very grateful to this council for the Cooley Road, or the, excuse me, the Crest Carmichael Crestview interchange updates. I think this council proved the naysayers wrong, and that this project, now that it's been completed, while difficult to get through early part of the summer, it's tremendous. And that intersection, the whole road on Carmichael is really, really nice. So, as a councilperson who has been through this project before, I, I just want to know. I think you've done an excellent job, and thank you very much.
Can you come to every meeting?
Dean, might I?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Troyer and Mr. Minogue and Mr. Murphy. You guys have stuck with this issue, and I think it proves really what can happen when citizens get involved. They care about their neighborhood, and they're willing to work through the process. It's not always clean, it's not always quick, but hopefully, we reached a, an amenable solution to everyone, so thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Well, we already had, under old business, our tourism update, I believe. Did you have anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Good. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. We dedicated the Boy Scout statue down at Lakefront Park yesterday in a nice ceremony, and I think that completed project is something that we can be proud of as a community. Turned out very nice. We've done a couple of improvements in conjunction with that, including taking down the old berm, and there was a concrete retain, kind of a safety bumper wall there, back from the days when that was a heavily traveled highway, and, which improved sightlines down to the water, and so that, once the grass gets growing there, that's gonna be nice. I think we have the beginnings there now of a pedestrian plaza right there from the arch to the bridge that can really be nice, more than the old paved roadbed that looks like a closed roadway. Now, it's going to begin to be quite inviting to come and stand, meet and greet, and we will continue to work on that. We did talk in, in committee about improvements and inspections... We did talk in, in committee about improvements and inspections to the bridge there. That bridge is now primarily a pedestrian bridge. It's a public safety access bridge, and we've got some vendors to the boats and to the garbage out at the end that need to get across it, and we need to decide exactly what we need there, what it's gonna take to keep that safe. And, as I said, in Finance Committee, every attention will be given to public, public safety there, particularly pedestrian safety, and we have improved the bridge already in the last twelve months, making it much more pedestrian safe. And I believe committee will be working on that. That's something that we all care about. And Lakefront Park, as I said yesterday, is really a jewel. The same year that scouting began, nineteen-ten, that bridge was built. And that bridge, or the, the beginnings of that bridge were built. A group of Hudson citizens, residents, thought there ought to be a bridge to replace the ferry service, and they got together, and the state of Wisconsin and the state of Minnesota, neither one had either funding or the inclination to build a bridge. And so, a group of Hudson boosters started a club called the Bridge Booster Club, and they sold buttons to raise money to build a bridge, which was a toll bridge. And it's really a phenomenal story, and it just happened that scouting started in nineteen-ten, and they're celebrating their anniversary by donating a beautiful statue to the city of Hudson. Well, that same year, nineteen-ten, this group got together, went to Congress in nineteen-eleven and didn't ask for any money, they just asked for permission to build a bridge, and they got permission to build a bridge across that river in one year. Seems phenomenal to look back at it now, that this group of Hudson citizens did it, and within a couple of years, they had raised the money and built that bridge, and it was paid off, the investors in it were paid off within about three or four years. And the city bought it for fifty-some thousand dollars, and then proceeded to collect about seventy-five thousand dollars a year for thirty-five years, collecting tolls on it. I think the story of the construction of that bridge is really a phenomenal story that we need to tell. Everyone in Hudson should know the story of why it's called the Hudson Bridge. When Congress gave approval, they said, yep, here's the point where you can build it from, and just build it wherever it's convenient over on the Minnesota side. It was a Hudson deal from start to finish, and sometimes people ask me, why is it the Hudson Bridge? It's a mile south of, you know, downtown Hudson. Well, it wasn't originally, I mean, it was Hudson's Bridge, really. And so, I don't know what we might do to commemorate that hundredth anniversary next year, but I think we should give some thought to that. You know, we've got some plaques and informational things. As part of the pavilion plan that was put forward, to put a shelter down at the end of the toll road, Dyke Road, a few years ago, and that was partly intended to be educational about that, but I, I think everyone who visits town and sees what a spectacular place it is to visit ought to walk away knowing something about why it's there. Why is there this twenty-five-hundred-foot road that they built out across the river so that they only had to span a little bit of bridge? So, I'd encourage the community to think about what we might do to commemorate that. And I just wanted to mention the Scout statue, for those of you that haven't been down to see it, you should see it. He, he gieses out across the bay, and I think it just, the setting of it, it couldn't be nicer, so I'm very happy with that. Any communication from any alderperson?
I, I'd like to acknowledge the Water Department. I had a lot of residents call with this Eleventh Street product, project going on, and they're really doing a heck of a job keeping the citizens up there informed. Dag Selander in particular brought people buckets of fresh water when they shut off the water up there. So, those guys have been doing a real good job, making sure everybody's informed up there. And the parks look great, too, so nice job on the parks, Tom.
The Parks crew have worked on Lakefront and did that without coming in, in any special budget request, and I think they've really done some nice work, completely in-house crew within this year's budget, what's been done down there. Any other alderperson? City attorney?
Nope.
Administrator?
Continue to work on the budget. Oh, Betty's waving her hand, but, um, we are, Finance Committee will just have, maybe in the next meeting can discuss when they want to get together and start working on that, but all of the budgets are in, ninety percent of the narratives are in, so we're just doing some conversions now.
I just have one thing, I'm here to remind Tom, to remind you guys, I think there's a meeting in Public Works tomorrow, that they're having somebody, a, a special speaker from the DNR, come to talk about the stormwater management. The staff's been working on this for quite a long time, and I think it could be very informative, so.
Four-thirty right now?
Yep, it's first on the agenda.
Okay. With that, I think we might be ready to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. We're adjourned, thank you.